Calling the Norfolk School Committee meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. Good evening to everyone. I'm going to start with the mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Have a roll call, please.
Peter Schwalbe.
Grace Lockhead.
Midora Champagne.
Lisa Sheldon.
Victoria Sodano.
Ingrid Alhoney.
We'll start with public comment, and it looks like no one is here to speak tonight. Moving on to correspondence, which we have received none, that no one wanted out on the public record. So we'll move directly to the committee chair report. We have some gifts to approve. Exhibit one. We have a gift from the PTO in the amount of $1,000 as part of the Linda Balfour Library, and those are books for HOD. And then we also have the Dave Young Children's Literature in the amount of $500, and that is library books for Freeman Kennedy for a total of $1,500. So if I get a motion to approve the gifts as stated.
I move to approve the gifts as stated in exhibit one.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we need to appoint a MASC delegate for their annual meeting to have a vote for Norfolk during their joint conference on Friday, November 8th. Ingrid, can you talk a little bit more about the responsibility of the delegate and exactly what we need?
Yep, so MASC has an annual conference. It's a joint conference that happens in November, and at that time they vote any changes or updates to their bylaws. And every member district can appoint a delegate to be a voting member to those bylaw discussions and revisions. So this would be to appoint a delegate to represent the district in any voting that happens at their annual business meeting. That's the end of the conference. I'm not sure if we have anybody able to attend. That's the conference.
Is it something where it's mandatory, or they'll vote on something that has a direct impact on the school, or is it more?
It's really about the operations of MASC and their functions. So it's, the business meeting's Friday, November 8th. It's the end of the three-day conference. So if we have anybody interested in attending, we usually vote the delegate to be whoever might be able to attend the meeting. If we don't have anybody that's able to attend on that day, then you wouldn't be part of the voting anyway.
Does anyone have an interest or desire?
I can't attend, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm unable to attend that weekend.
When is town meeting?
12th.
The 12th.
The 12th.
And when's the, I'm sorry.
The joint conference is the week before, so I believe it's the 6th through the 8th, and the voting happens on the last day on that Friday.
No, but it was the other community forum that we're going to have. Is that on December 6th?
I can go. Yep, yeah, that's fine. I've gone before, it's fine. See all my old friends.
And I couldn't commit to go, but I can put myself down as an alternate. If something comes up, then maybe if my schedule clears, I could, if something comes up for you, I could.
Sure, that would be, I think that would be.
Okay. But it's not like a binding, like if something comes up for Adora, or something comes up for me?
Oh yeah, no, I'm not, but I think it should be. This just gives you the authority to vote if you're in attendance on that.
Okay. I'm looking to, for motion to approve Midora Champagne as the MASC delegate, and myself, Lisa Sheldon, as the alternate voting delegate for the joint conference for MASC. So moved. Peter, can you second, because we're both in the vote?
I second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is it for my session.
All right, so the first on the agenda under my report tonight is an update on our SAC program. We have our SAC director, Toni Davis-Squires, here. Toni, if you want to come to the mic to talk a little bit about our before and after-school program. As you know, SAC has been in operation for a number of years now. Toni, who preceded my time here. When it was first brought forward, or when the program was first established, they struggled for a number of years financially. The district was supporting SAC through the operating budget. We didn't have enough revenue coming in. I think a lot of program enhancements have happened, and Toni's really built that program up to where it's self-sustaining and now operates at a profit for the district. So she's able to fund her staff without financial support through our operating budget. We know that the community continues to grow. We have more families. We've been, we've been talking about this a lot from the building project rent lens, but the community is growing. We have a lot of more, more school-aged children in the district, and Toni has been working very collaboratively with Norfolk REC, as well as the district, to look for ways to expand capacity. So Toni, I'll turn it to you and let you talk through some of the things that we're working on.
Sure, so I'm working with the administrators so that some of the instructional assistants in both buildings could work with us both before and after school. Right now, there's an overlap between their hours with us and then with the school. And so we've been fortunate that we have two women here at the Freeman Kennedy School who are able to join us right at 3:00 to help us out with our after-school program when we need them most, rather than coming down at 3:20. And then we also have someone here in the morning who's able to stay for the full amount of time so that they're with us for dismissal. So we are working with a few other interested instructional assistants who expressed interest at the beginning of this school year, and I met with them last week to determine who might be able to join us so that we can add more students to our before and after-school programs at HOD, and then our after-school program here on the other days that we're still looking. We're also working with the REC department. There are several families who have children who are picked up early, and so we're trying to figure out if maybe some of the families who currently attend the SAC program might be interested in more of a part-time program offered through REC. And also, some of the families on our waitlist, we thought it would be helpful to at least have another option in town, even if it's only until 4:15. So that was something else that we were looking into, and I met with REC last week to try to determine if that was a possibility, and they're looking into that for us as well.
They've been great partners. I think one of the things, Toni, you can maybe speak to this, but because SAC is operated through the schools as a school-run program, we have different requirements through DESI for staffing, which is different than a private program, and that has been really, really difficult. Do you want to talk a little bit about the ratios we have to have of staff to students and the requirements for our staff?
Yeah, so we need one staff member for every 13 children, and unfortunately, high school students don't count into those ratios. So although we have some wonderful high school staff members working with us, they don't count in order for us to allow more students into the program. So we post the positions through school spring, Indeed. We've had great luck, you know, word of mouth, family members, things like that. But unfortunately, the hours are really difficult to fill because it's 2:00 in the morning, 2 hours in the morning, and then 3.5 hours in the afternoon, and there's that split shift. So it works out for some people, but not for many. And so it's, that's really a challenge for our program and other programs in the state.
And also, our overall enrollment in SAC has really grown. So I think currently you have 147 families involved.
Something like that, yeah, might be, yeah.
147 students in the program. So again, we have struggled with hiring staff members that meet the DESI requirements and maintaining those ratios. I think Toni was able to bring several families or several additional students in off the waitlist on Friday afternoons that had been waiting. We are hopeful that the REC program, because they have different requirements for staffing, they don't have, they can have high school students that support those programs. We have found that many families access SAC for childcare but only need that bridge time, like an additional hour in the afternoon. So we had hoped to be able to run a program. We looked into trying to split SAC and have a second program run here, but again, running through us and through the schools, we don't have that staffing flexibility, and we weren't able to get enough. We tried advertising in the spring, and then again, when we onboarded new staff, to see if we could run a parallel program, thinking that some families then might choose the part-time option because it's less expensive and meets their need, opening spaces for families that have more childcare needs in the afternoon. But because REC is really interested in trying to maybe run a daily offering that would be an hour a day, we're continuing to pursue that and support them with that, and also look to expand staffing at SAC so that we can bring more families in. We're hoping to really see what that looks like over the next month or two, and we do recognize that, you know, if we can't grow the program in this way, or we can't meet the needs or the demand, that we may have to relook at some of our lottery procedures and things in the spring. But we're hopeful that these parallel solutions might bring enough relief that we can meet the demand in other ways. Any questions for Toni or anything that we can share? Or if you know people who might be interested in working for our SAC program, please spread the word, because again, it's really, it's tough hours. It's tough hours, and we know that families that are working need those hours. But it is hard to find people that want to come from 7:00 to 9:00 and then go home and come back at 3:30 to 7:00. So it's tricky.
I'm just curious a little bit about the lottery system and how it functions. Quick question, 147 students in today in the program. Do you know how many are in the waitlist currently?
It depends on the day in the program. So our most substantial waitlist is at HOD right now in the afternoon, and then not too far from that is the one here at the Freeman. So after-school is really our biggest need at this point.
Right, right, but actual numbers, not off the top of your head?
Yeah, so I mean, at HOD, there's a day that we have over 30 on the waitlist.
30 students or 30 families?
30 students.
Oh, okay. And then, do you know how long, so if it's, if you, if you do the lottery, you don't make it in, you get on a waitlist, do you know the average wait time families encounter to move from waitlist to active program?
It's been difficult for families in the past few years to get into the program. I do have a few that have been on the waitlist for several years at this point. So we're really trying to work on that and look specifically at those families and try to figure out how we can get them in, and that Friday opened up for a lot of the Freeman Kennedy families, but we're still working on the other days.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it sounds like maybe looking at the lottery in the future of some other solutions, yeah. So I have more lottery-based questions, but I think I can wait until the spring.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, we're looking at it closely. I think, you know, most programs in our area, as they were developing, have the same policies and practices that we have, where families that are currently in the program can re-enroll. And part of that is for continuity of care for children, and part of that's how the program becomes financially viable, because people want to make a long-term commitment, they want the same providers working with their children, but the community is changing, and the need is changing. And so we're looking at how we can and try to balance those two, two needs and serve more families.
Yeah, so it sounds like the only, like, means to get more throughput from the waitlist to the program is just more staff, which is key.
And the program dipped during COVID. We actually had a lot of space, we didn't fill it, so, but now there's an increased demand coming back from COVID-2 because more families are looking for care as they return. People aren't working at home where they were, so it is definitely, we're seeing that need recur.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like I said, the lottery component, which is something, when we actually, if we end up looking at that, have some thoughts about that, but I'll wait until then.
Yeah, and I think we're really hopeful. I think, as I said, REC has a little more flexibility about their staffing, and they've been great partners. We've, we've had challenges in the past where they have, where we have looked at days that we have the highest demand or the highest waitlist, and REC has offered some of their before and after-care programs on those days, which has been really helpful. They are eight-week sessions, and then there's a gap, but they, they have tried to really partner with us on looking at the highest-demand days and offer. They also were able to, in the past, and they hope to maybe this spring, be able to offer programming for families on early release days, which is a huge demand for, for working parents. So I think we're really hopeful if we can partner with the REC department again, and they can provide an after-school program, that that may really open up slots, because a lot of our families, you know, they're coming back on the train, or they just need that hour, they can't get here for 3:00. But if I had, you know, as a parent, an option, I could just do an hour, then I wouldn't need to pay for the full, full day, and that might open slots. So I think we're trying to creatively look at this, but I think once we have better data on how this works, then we can take the next steps and look at other, other possibilities.
I would just like to say thank you. As an avid SAC user, my boys feel.
And someone who's made it off the waitlist, right?
It was, staying on that waitlist for a very long time was one of the best decisions I made, because all three of my boys feel so welcome and so connected to your staff. So I know it's hard to find, but you really find quality people and make them feel very much at home. So thank you for everything you do. Thank you very much.
Yep, I would echo that. I, my, again, this goes to the strange timeframe my experience in the school system has covered, because my eldest child was just walked into SAC and given a space, and very much enjoyed his time there, and we pulled him out during COVID, I think, and didn't retain our space, and then my daughter languished on the waitlist for a period of time. So we, you know, I mean, I think it goes to the enrollment issue that we've been talking about ad nauseam, and just sort of the stretched resources.
And the demand, the growth has, you know, like, like you said, we didn't used to have waitlists, and we were running in a deficit trying to build this program, but now Toni's done such a great job with programming, everybody wants their kids in the program, you know, and I think Norfolk's unique from many other districts, where in most districts, the schools aren't solely responsible for providing options for after-school care. You know, other communities like Foxborough have an after-school program at the Y, they have multiple other options for families. Norfolk just doesn't have that. There's the Adirondack Club, but that is financially prohibitive for some families, so there aren't the same community other options here that, that many larger communities have. So we recognize that, too.
You know, there are some businesses in the surrounding towns that are either tutoring services or, you know, after-school book clubs. Is that the kind of thing you mean, that the REC is looking at for maybe that hour after school, bringing those businesses in, or would it be something?
Potentially, what we are looking at is at HOD offering something similar to our program, but just shortened. So come down, have snack, maybe do a story, a craft, maybe bring them out for recess, and then by the time 4:15 rolls around, they would be picked up. So something more similar to our program, rather than bringing like a group in. And then here at the Freeman School, we were looking more so at maybe like a homework club or something to support math skills or something along those lines. So not necessarily another, you know, business coming in, but I don't think that they would be opposed to that either.
Okay.
But something to operate more generally, like on a consistent daily basis, with snacks, social opportunities for kids, just as short hours.
Some of the businesses I saw offer like, once a week at the local library, so I was like, oh, I wonder if that.
That might be a good resource. They have brought in, I mean, you guys bring in different businesses all the time, like you've brought fund engineers and different programs in for students, so they, and REC has done that as well, so. Okay, any other questions for Toni? Thank you, I know it's been a long day.
Thanks for saying.
All right. Budget transfers, you have in your packet some recommended budget transfers from our business consultant, Marion Goodwin. I can walk through those. They're really just between lines, so we're recommending reducing our software line by about $12,000, because we were able to write and fund some software through grants, so we were able to reduce costs there, and we had to increase the special ed team chair position just because of demand. So recommending reducing the software so that we can fund, partially fund the increase in special ed team chair. We also had some additional savings in the budget from extended-year preschool, which happens over the summer, as well as the PD line, because we are getting some PD through the vendor for the ELA program. So we're recommending just shifting those things to support hardware. The regular, again, the regular extended school year was over budget, whereas pre-K was under, so just to transfer between these tow lines and moving, funding from vendor PD to support in district stipends. So again, we are providing some of the ELA PD at a lower cost than anticipated, but we have more teachers working on committees this year, because we have a math review and supporting the implementation. So we want to put some of the PD allocation into district stipends to fund those. So these are just transfers between lines. Happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
I'm looking for a motion for the budget transfers as outlined in exhibit four.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion?
Just real quick, ESY, PK?
Yeah, so students who have disabilities and receive services through our Special Education Department sometimes participate in an extended school year program, and there's two budgets for that. There's the extended year, there's a budget for the pre-K extended school year, and then the regular. Pre-K was under budget, so we had savings, but the regular ESY for students K to 6 was over, so we're just moving the money from where we saved to where we're over. But both fund extended school year services for students with specialized needs.
Okay, extended school year, got it, okay. All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, on to the HL of Day fundraisers. You have a list from Mr. Bello of fundraisers that HL of Day will be running this year. These are all traditional food, traditional, I'm reading food drive, these are all traditional fundraisers that the school has run in the past, that they do a food drive for the food pantry around Thanksgiving, they do the Coats for Kids and Hatton Men's Collection in the winter, another food drive typically around the 100th day of school. And then the Norfolk Teachers Association supports the Read Across America program raffle. And then they do an opening day at Fenway Park, they do a fundraiser for the Jimmy Fund, and then they do Jump Vote for Heart and May. Again, none of these are new. I think they've done all of these since I've been here, so they're pretty traditional fundraisers. So we're looking for a motion to have those approved. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the PE and health standards. So as you know, the Massachusetts Department of Education has released new health and physical education standards for all grade levels. I'm going to let Vicky speak to where we are, but we are just at the beginning of starting to unpack these. Grade level standards, some of them across multiple grade levels, so we will have to work with the regional middle and high school, too. But Vicky, I'll let you speak to that.
Sure, so, yes, Dr. Lardy kind of mentioned that we really are at the beginning stages of unpacking the K through 12 health and PE frameworks that the state has released last year. I've been working closely with our PE teachers. We've also have partnered with our tri-talents. We're really looking to, just to engage with their PE staff as well during this work, and also just to looking to ensure we have like a vertical alignment, so all our students can go through, as we try to do for annual programming, who go through ours, school systems can enter the middle school programming seamlessly as well. So at this point, we are really just kind of doing, kind of like a walkthrough of the new standards, really looking at our curriculum, identifying areas that we are already meeting, because not everything was a big shift, you know, and where we need to unpack a little bit further. Once we've kind of completed this work, our next step would be to kind of look at our curriculum that we are using. Right now, we're using a national curriculum for PE called Spark, which seems so far to align really well to the new standards as well. But like I said, we want to make sure that we are, we are full alignment. So as we kind of go through this process, like we do with any curriculum, that we'll probably have to do a review, and at that point, we will look at what the state is recommending in terms of curriculum, if we do feel that we need to enhance our curriculum or adopt another curriculum. But at that point, once we have a recommendation, we'll bring it to the school committee, just like we did for the ELA program, for approval. But we're really far from there, so, like I said, we're really just at the beginning stages of really just trying to understand what the standards are asking us to do, what the impact is on our current programming, because it is a special. So unlike the other curriculum, the time is limited as well of what we're able to. So kind of like, there's a lot of things we have to kind of look through to be able to even get to the steps of what the next steps would be for us in terms of programming.
And we will have to engage with the middle school, too, to see what, what of the band of standards that I think it's 6 through 8, what belongs in 6, what belongs in 7th and 8th. And we do need to make that as a regional decision, because otherwise, we'll be sending Rentham, the students won't be coming with common experience, so that vertical alignment. We do the same with all of our content areas, some math, and it doesn't mean we use the same curriculum, but we have to agree to where the standards land so that students have a vertical alignment as they go through.
Any questions? Like a start-of-next-year thing, or just a very high-level timing?
Yeah, so I think that we're, like I said, that's one of the things we're kind of working on this year, is just to kind of do, to kind of identify what, because we are engaging with other, with the other districts, so we have to kind of agree what our timeline is, you know? So this is the work we're kind of engaging in this year to be able to have an alignment and kind of see how, how leading this work will, will look, that's manageable for all the districts.
What is the typical timeframe that we have to implement or to meet the standard, right? Because, just from my own education, this came out last year, so we're going to spend it this year, it just feels like that's a long runway, which is fine, I just don't, what's the standard amount of time that we have?
I think the expectation from the state is that they'll be implemented by next fall. Is that your understanding, too, Vicky?
Yes, and the, but like, the implementation is a process, too, you know? So it's just like, they want to make sure that, they don't want us waiting like five years, obviously, you know?
Right.
But, but I think that they do give some grace, you know, for us to be able, like I said, especially for, because it, there's staffing implications.
Implications.
Thank you for this, because it is a special, you know what I mean? So I, I think that I would like to, ideally, our goal is at least by the end of this school year, to kind of have a plan of how we're going to move forward.
Okay.
You know, but like I said, it's, we have some PD days we're trying to align with our, with our counterparts to be able to kind of work on this together, too, as a team. So, and not all our PD days align, so it's kind of like finding, you know what I mean?
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, but, but we definitely like, want to have like a more solid plan by the end of this school year.
Present some recommendations to the committee later this year. I think the other thing that's a bit of a challenge, this looks different in different districts, so we don't have designated health teachers, we have wellness teachers, and health is incorporated into the phys ed program, whereas other districts might have a standalone health program. So we have to really kind of tease out how we address this and what makes sense, and then there's always a professional development in training that needs to happen if we're going to implement anything new, just like we're doing dedicating time this year and last year to support the ELA. So it's not an overnight kind of thing. We have to study it, make recommendations, and then make sure we're supporting and training our staff. Any questions? I just realized I skipped the basic shelter update, so I'll jump back to that. Any questions for?
No, I think I was trying to understand, it sounds like a rather large undertaking for a special component of the school classroom day. So is the main complexity in that, the last thing you just said, was that we don't have health ed teachers currently, but we have phys ed teachers?
Yeah, I think in elementary schools, probably all across the state, the staffing looks very different for how these, you know, I think, is it Rentham that has health?
Rentham has a health teacher.
Rentham still has health, a full-time health teacher. Plainville does not, most school systems don't. So how people address the standards and what materials work depend on the context in which you're delivering instruction and, and how we pace that. So I think it is a little bit more challenging, because program models look different, and we have to figure out how we're going to meet both sets of standards.
Yeah, so Dr. Pearl and I have been like attending some state workshops. The state has offered a lot of workshops, have kind of recommendations of like different models. We've been trying to talk to other districts also who have like a similar kind of setup to, just to kind of learn more about how everybody's kind of approaching, you know what I mean, to be able to implement the standards. So this, we're kind of like in the information gathering stage right now, where we're, we're trying to kind of see like, you know, what would be reasonable and would still align, and it will give us kind of alignment within our district, you know, and, and be manageable for, for the way our PE classes are structured right now. And I guess, like I said, we're happy we'll give up these, that's why I just don't have much to speak to right now, because we're just still such a, yeah, starting piece, so.
I know it's very high-level, but from a curriculum standpoint, you don't see this as like a massive cost, a health curriculum is not going to.
So the state's doing a really, well, they, they seem to be, they put together a pretty comprehensive, actually, website that is open to the public right now, that kind of, and they've added some recommended curricula that they said that they would help or would be open source, I mean, there would be a cost to it. So like, that's one of the things, like I said, there's a lot to kind of unpack, because this, I think they only released that this summer. So they're kind of.
Curating resources.
Right, exactly. So, so that's something we'll definitely take, because a lot of considerations, you know, in terms of budget, and like I said, capacity and. you know, in terms of budget, and like I said, capacity, and programming, and alignment, so that's where we are right now, we're trying to gather as much information as possible, so we can kind of at least start eliminating some things that we know are not going to be a good match for us, and then kind of go from there, you know?
But from a financial planning, and I'm guessing you're asking from the budget lens, that we have a math adoption coming up? Health curriculum is generally not the same kind of costs that you would see for math or an E L A adoption. It's significantly less.
Yeah, I think that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like really not even comparable, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So I can jump back to the update in the base state shelter, so not a lot different that I have to report. We haven't had a meeting with the state for the last week and a half, there haven't been any significant changes to the information that they have provided. We have had some students enroll, currently, we have 18 students that are enrolled across the grade levels, slightly more, higher numbers at H O D than at Freeman. We have had several students exit as well, we've had three students that have started with us that have since exited. I have a meeting with Stessie tomorrow to get an update on potential exit dates for other students that have begun with us that are now leaving, whether it's to, you know, because a lease has been executed and families are moving, or again, some families are moving in with families, and we're waiting for those arrangements to be made. So we have a meeting tomorrow at 11 o'clock, and we'll get an update on that. I think the other thing that we've really been working on, and I think we continue to advocate for, is funding. So again, as we talked about earlier with the school committee, the state did make a grant available to us to apply for, to reimburse us for the costs that we had already absorbed over the summer as we onboarded staff in anticipation of the initial model, and then a higher volume of students coming into the district. As such, the district has committed our resources to those two staffing positions, but we were in the process of onboarding other staff and looking for supplemental curriculum materials, and when the state transitioned to the respite shelter, we stopped those efforts. It doesn't mean that even with a smaller number of students, we don't still need resources and other things. So I have been advocating, and I think Lisa has supported this, and Justin Casanova-Davis from the town has also supported, we still need additional revenue, because if we were planning for the model we have right now, we wouldn't have allocated the funds the way we did in June. So we greatly appreciate the state reimbursement for those two salaries, but we also need, because the model changed, funding for transportation for our paraprofessional staff, for curriculum resources in translation, so we are advocating for those additional funds. I would say that the state has been receptive to that idea, they are working with us, we don't have a commitment of funding yet, but they are open to further conversations around revenue and support. From a staffing lens, we hired two paraprofessionals this past week that are bilingual and can support translation and our students as they integrate into general education settings. We have somebody, I anticipate they both will, once they complete the onboarding process, fingerprinting all the state requirements for Q R, things like that, they'll be ready to start with us hopefully next week. So we also have posted for a family liaison that would support teachers in communicating with families from the shelter, arranging with the shelter provider, transportation for parent conferences, any kinds of special information we have to get out. So we had a number of staff members apply for that, it's a few hours a week to do that, and I think we will be appointing someone this week to fill that, that need for us as well. So we continue to be a little bit concerned about space at H L of Day and numbers, and we've communicated that very clearly to the town, that, to the state, that we are really closely watching those numbers because of our space concerns. The state has communicated that they are also trying, we had more, more enrollment and more families that received extensions in this first round, because those families came to the shelter over the summer before it was transitioned to a respite center. So I think that they were a little bit more generous in granting extensions for imminent housing, based on the fact that conditions changed, whereas families now are opting to come to a respite center, knowing the, what's required. They are also working through some glitches in terms of how they are supporting families with leases, landlords need to be able to produce a certificate that the properties are free from lead earlier in the process, because that is why some leases were failing, because they couldn't provide the documentation, and the state cannot fund leases because of the lead laws, if a child under six is going to be in an apartment without that certificate. So they're trying to support and improve that process, so that these leases are executed successfully. So that's kind of where we are. The kids that have come have been excited, they, Vicky and I both rode the bus the first week, they were very excited about the schools and coming in. You know, I think our teachers were looking for additional, some additional software, because Google does not translate into Haitian Creole, so we are piloting some other devices that can support that for, as needed. And again, we're just watching closely the numbers, and we are advocating for funding to make sure that we are able to continue to support, you know, all of the programs and the needs of all of our students effectively as we move forward. So that's where we are at, I'm happy to take any questions on that, if I can answer anything.
That feels exhaustive, that was a lot of information, thank you.
Sure. School building project update. You have a memo in your packet I wanted to share with you, it was also shared with the select board, that just talks about the next steps for the process. So we have a community forum tomorrow night, right here, in the Freeman Library, at 7:00. The focus of the first community forum will be to update the community on the results of the second phase of the feasibility study, and the recommendations for why we're recommending bringing forward the first, the brick and mortar project. I think the second one is scheduled for November 6, and I think we may focus on that one more on the original feasibility, the design plans, and all of, you know, and answer questions about the proposed model. The process next, the, it has to, so we presented to the advisory board, the advisory board has not voted yet, we did our presentation, and we expect to hear from them when they're going to be voting on each of the warrant articles that was presented. They will make their decision, they are not voting on whether or not to move the article forward, they are voting whether the advisory board will recommend support of the article, but the article will be printed in the warrant. From there, it would have to pass at the town, fall town meeting by a two-thirds majority, that's the requirement for a debt exclusion vote. If it passes at fall town meeting, then we will have to hold a special election, because it also has to pass at the ballot following the town meeting vote. Grace Mador, do you want to jump in on anything building related?
Madam Chair. Yeah, I mean, I think I would advocate as much as we can for attendance at these forums, I think knowledge is power when it comes to this, especially because, and it's been said at advisory and the select board, and as well as school committee, you know, when you look at the actual financials, it's, we feel it's the most fiscally appropriate move, and so any delay in this will just cost the town more money, which is the last thing I think any of us want. So I would urge attendance and education, and I will say thank you again to the community members who have served on the, the.
Building committee.
Building committee. Sorry, it's been a long day. Again, because, I mean, it's just been a lot of work, and, you know, they've been great to work with, so.
Yeah, I would echo those sentiments, I think it's imperative that as many people who can attend the community forums, watch the presentations that have been made, I mean, most recently to the school committee, to the advisory committee, to the select board, but really, there is information and presentations, there are presentations on YouTube that have been made going as far back as 2019, and you can tell me, I haven't aged a day since 2019 when you watch them all, but, you know, I mean, this has been studied for an extended period of time, and the time is now to bring something forward, to make a responsible choice, and avoid, in my opinion, what would be the worst-case scenario, which would be reaching a situation where we are so far over capacity in both buildings that not only do we require permanent building addition, but in the construction phase of that, we also require a temporary modular solution, which will just be a few million more dollars that the town will have to spend to solve a problem that we could solve now, from my perspective, so I'm kind of, I've been beating this drum for a while, so I'm happy that we get to move it forward, but I think that, I have heard a number of questions, I've heard a number of opinions, I'm not sure that everyone who is voicing those has explored all of the material that is available, kind of out in the ether of Norfolk, to educate themselves on what the situation is, why the need is critical, why the need is critical at this point. So my sincere hope is that we have outstanding attendance at town meeting, and that everyone is well-informed up until that point, and tomorrow's forum is a great place to start, if you haven't been in the trenches so far, so.
And tomorrow night at the forum too, we will also be sharing with the public, and we will post on our website a link to the building committee and the building project website. We have a separate website that Adrian has been working really, really hard, with a lot of hours, on putting all information on this project in one place. So on our website, we have a tab that shows why a building project now, that kind of gives the narrative of why there's a critical need, what our enrollment looks like, we have photos that will help the public see how the buildings have changed, how we've repurposed space, there's a planning tab that will tell you who's on the building committee, what the meeting history has been, the timeline of the project, major milestones. We also have all of the demographic studies and all of the feasibility reports in one place, links to every meeting going back to 2017, that have all been recorded, so we're trying to make it easier for people to make sure they get full information and any questions they might have, so we will have that ready to share. It'll still be a work in project, we will be adding, and it'll be evolving, but we will have it ready for people to be able to see as of tomorrow night, so we're looking forward to that.
I'm trying to think of how we drive attendance to particularly November 6, which will be the last opportunity to present in a forum, and then town meeting in general, and I think maybe we should try and understand, what are we allowed to do as school committee members, are there any constraints on what we can and can't do, and can we just, how do we drive the attendance, can we post in every single class Facebook page, can we, now that we have liaisons, reach out to our school partners and say, can you put this on your page, because this might be interesting to the people following your page? Just trying to think of how, how we get the word out, how we encourage people to come, so they can make an informed decision, whatever decision they want, as long as it's an informed one, I'm happy.
So I did reach out, yeah, it is, I did reach out to the Office for Campaign Finance, because there are some restrictions in terms of the, using, the use of public resources or public positions for advocating for a ballot question. What we were advised is that the Campaign Finance Office does not govern town meeting, they do not regulate how people support or don't support warrant articles. They also did say that it is permissible for school committee members to advocate for a position as individual beings, or, you know, not through the school committee channel, but as an individual, you can advocate, you can use social media, you can get the word out, you can share your perspective, you can encourage people to attend, what, and that's all permissible for both town meeting and for ballot. What changes when it becomes a ballot or election issue is you cannot do anything that requires fundraising, so you can't print signs and distribute signs, you can't gather funds and distribute material, you would not be able to use classroom Facebook pages, because that would be a government, potentially linked to, or have an appearance of a school resource, for the ballot issue. But private social media, sharing information, encouraging people to attend, that is all permissible. The Office for Campaign Finance also has an attorney of the day, so anyone could call if you're thinking, oh, can I, you know, at this meeting, can I make a mention of, if you have any questions, you can call them, and they will advise you. We also have to have the building project page, we can have a tab on ours, but we can't send out mailers, people have to seek the information. But we are allowed to have that link to our school site, information for the public, if people click on it, they can go, because they are seeking that information out, and we've had them view the contents of our, and weigh in to make sure that everything we have, we're allowed to provide that factual information. Our page won't say, "Go vote," it will have the factual history and all the information about the project, but you can always call if you have a question or a thought. But we really do, as you said, whether people vote for it or not, we want people to engage with this process, to get the information and to come to town meeting, because if it doesn't pass that town meeting, it will not go forward to the vote. We would have to wait until May to even consider bringing it forward again, and the building committee, as we presented, every delay comes with a potential risk of cost for temporary solutions, but a four to eight percent, or I think it's four to 12 percent potential construction escalation cost, so the longer you wait, the more pricey it gets, and the greater the impact on the taxpayer, so.
And that six months delay equals a year.
Yes.
Of school.
Right.
So I think I want to review the ballot constraints once we hopefully get to that point, but for now, could we send the flyer from the school about November 6 to N C P?
We can send the community forum information flyers out, that we can send, yes, and we can send.
Like even to like the Norfolk Cooperative Preschool, because they're going to have families who would be interested, or?
Yeah, we could, we could send the flyer on an informational forum, yep, we can do that, and we also have posted, we sent the flyers, Adrian designed flyers, and we sent them to town hall, to the senior center, to the library, so they're visible. We're going to add a barcode to those that has the link to the project's website, so that when we advertise the November 6 forum, people can scan and get more information before they come in as well, so we can do that. The other thing the town is doing is they are going to publish a fall town newsletter that anybody who has articles in the warrant can send to town, a two paragraph information, and any additional links to the fall town newsletter. So we are, I've already crafted something that I've shared, and we're going to be sending that, and that will go out to every resident, that will say, you know, here's why we need a building project, and here's the link to more information.
If I could too, I just want to be really clear with all of our viewing public and the lovely folks who are here today, this vote is for, it is not for the entire project. So we have a project estimate cost that is the median of a range we were given of an estimate. This is for schematic design through bid documents, this is $4.3 million, which is not a small amount of money, but it is certainly not the entirety of the project cost. And I think the goal, my goal, as a member of the building committee, I can't speak for the entire committee, is that during that schematic design phase, when you really get into the nuts and bolts, literally, of what you're going to be trying to build, is where you can see some value engineering, some changes to the potential cost and scope, and that can go in any direction, right, it can go up, it can go down, it can circle around the same median point, but the estimate for the cost is just that, it's an estimate. The goal for this phase of the project that we are attempting to fund is to come forward at the kind of second round of approval from the town, much the way the fire station did, with bid documents in hand, so the cost at that point is known, so you are not asking the town to fund tens of millions of dollars based on an estimate, it's an actualized cost, and so you know what the bonding will look like, you know what the actual expense will look like, it will be a project that can be defined, so I think that there's some.
And will have been publicly bid, and you'll have the actual bid, so you have a set number that won't.
Precisely, I, I mean, I think it's just, it's, there's a lot of sticker shock with the estimate to the cost of this project, I understand that. We are not there yet. Again, this is not a small amount of money, hence the need for a debt exclusion, but I think it's important to note that we are moving through the process carefully, thoughtfully, incrementally, so that we are being as responsible as we can be. And then the government nerd in me just wanted to point out that it's actually the State Ethics Commission that has an attorney of the day, not O C P F, so you'd have to Google a different site. O C P F, Campaign Finance can be separate from State Ethics.
It is separate, but I called Campaign Finance, and they had an attorney call me back, so maybe it's not an attorney of the day, but if you call them, they will have an attorney reply.
I think it's a forceful that sits in Boston and has to like field everybody's questions, but the number would be founded at different.
Thank you.
A difference, that's just.
No, that's great.
Me being a details nerd.
So I think as we get closer to the sixth and town meeting, we, between all of us, cover a lot of the class pages, we just shouldn't be conversing with each other on each other's posts about it, but we've all unanimously voted yes on it, so that's open, we don't have to worry about that, but I think that's just the key thing, just getting the word out, and hopefully driving attendance and working with. driving attendance and working with our partner organizations because people might be interested on, on their pages and just trying to get this out as many places as possible.
For sure. My, my key concern is that the people, the families that will be impacted by this decision the most might be the least likely to know about these forums or even the fact that there's an issue. Um, so I think your point about, you know, the daycare, the preschools is a really good one, um, and getting flyers there is, is a way to get out in front of people who might not, who would probably really care, but are not educated enough because they're not in the system yet.
Right. So they're not getting our emails and things, so.
And we have, like, local moms' clubs too, or I guess we need to find and spread the word where they have, like, a two-year-old and they're not even thinking about school yet, but it'll impact them.
But Lauren can tell them.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's a great suggestion and we can look at, um, getting, uh, uh, definitely the community forums and information out for, you know, more broadly. So, great. All right. Well, that actually leads nicely into the next, uh, topic. So, um, as we've discussed, uh, the job responsibilities for Adrienne as the executive assistant to the superintendent have changed pretty dramatically over the last few years. Um, as we just talked about, she is building the website for the building project and bringing in graphic design, uh, experience to support that, um, as well as developing the flyers, branding, um, communicating and corresponding with our PR company. Uh, so she's really taken a, a lead role in, in managing communications and centralizing and coordinating those efforts. Um, as a result, I am requesting that the school committee review and approve a revised job description that captures some of those pieces. Her prior job description was developed in the 1990s and there's a lot of it that, um, didn't make sense. So we've weeded out things that we really don't do anymore, um, and tried to, uh, shift this to be Executive Assistant Communications Coordinator for the district. So, um, I'm requesting the school committee vote to approve the updated job description, and then I will work with Adrienne to, um, adjust salary accordingly. I do think that this is going to result in a long-term savings to the district as opposed to our prior experience of contracting out, um, for web design, web services, um, and, and other kind of PR advertising functions. So I'm looking for a vote to approve the revised and updated job description.
Looking for a motion to approve the changes to the job description as stated in exhibit E.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Adrienne, for everything you've done before we did this. And that's it for my portion of the night tonight.
Moving on to committee and liaison reports. Do we have anything from policy?
Uh, no, because we are meeting after this meeting.
But likely next meeting we should have.
Yeah, no, we will, we will certainly update you next meeting about what we talk about in 20 minutes.
It's 8:15. Budget met yet? Are we planning to meet soon?
Probably, uh, November we would start.
Building Committee.
So the Building Committee has been pretty quiet these days. No, again, please come to the forums and help educate everyone who, who needs to know because the more people respond the better.
Spread the word.
Spread the word.
King Philip, our meeting was canceled last night, so I have nothing to report there.
Quickly.
Anything on the liaison reports? I have, um, oh, go ahead, Peter.
Oh, yeah. No, I've, I met Jack Campbell over the phone. Um, got, got a chance to get to know each other. We talked about the Lions a little bit, highlighting this month, they're sponsoring the walk, uh, to benefit cancer for, it's called No One Walks Alone, hoping that actually becomes an annual tradition, looking for, looking for participation and enjoyment of the community there. So I want to convey that here, you know, in, in our forum as well. Um, also thought it might be interesting to have him join us in a future meeting potentially, just to talk about Lions a little bit more, what they do, their funding, where their funding goes, things like that. And, um, you know, I know it benefits the school, the community at large, so I think it would be nice to have at some point when, uh, we can discuss maybe timings of that, Lisa.
Yeah, that'd be...
And then NCTV, Andrew and I chatted as well, and, um, no major updates there, but keeping, you know, on the radar in terms of, you know, the good work they do here for us, but anything as well that they're doing in the community that is of interest to our school community. Wanted to mention that they are going away from Comcast Channel Eight. They're entering the, the new era of HD television.
Dear.
Their new HD channel will be 1073.
1073.
Please let everyone know tonight because they're excited about it and, as am I. And Channel 22 will stay the same for government live feeds.
Is there any way we can not go HD for school committee meetings?
Yeah.
So, there you have it. Um, liaison updates.
Um, one thing you may want to mention to, um, I know there has been questions around NCTV getting a heads up, um, before the band concerts because sometimes they're not filmed. So it would be great to get those out there because I know my kids enjoy watching all that stuff all the time, so.
Yeah, noted.
They just watch themselves playing the band concert.
You have no idea how much NCTV we consume. Um, I have lots of CPAC updates. Yeah. Um, so I had the pleasure to chat with Kayla and Mike, um, earlier this week. Um, so I just wanted to let everybody know, um, the second Thursday of every month is the CPAC meeting. Um, and everybody's welcome to attend. They, um, always look for participation from the community, um, and just involvement as you can. Um, I did see in my personal email today, Trunk or Treat went out today, um, and they're really excited. Um, and it's, they already have a lot of trunks signed up. Um, it's their biggest fundraiser of the year, so really, you know, make sure, um, especially for those of you who might be new to the school system, it is a wonderful event, um, especially for the little kids. Um, and the other thing about trunk or treat, volunteering and volunteering not only, um, in person with your time, but any candy is, um, appreciated because then the CPAC doesn't have to actually pay for that. So candy donations are also welcome. Um, let me see. Multiple pages. Um, the, um, Active Kids program that is rolled out with the PTO, um, was kicked off, um, I believe this week. So there's one session a week at Freeman, one at HOD. It is going well so far. It's 45 minutes before school and there's lots of, um, uh, research out there that that actually makes a huge difference, um, in learning. So, um, going well. There's going to be eight sessions. Um, and the one thing I didn't know that I learned, which I thought was really interesting, is that is actually funded by the Derby Party that happened last year, um, which unfortunately I was unable to attend, but apparently was a blast. Um, and this year it will not be a Derby Party. It will be in April and themed to TBD, but keep your eyes peeled. Um, and then in short order, we are going to need volunteers for the iCare program, um, which if you recall last year's, um, adults in the community, parents usually come into the schools to read, um, and lead a session around a book, um, in every class, in every grade. So it's a pretty big undertaking from a volunteer perspective, um, but really good, um, feedback from last year. So looking forward to that. Um, so again, volunteer your time. Um, it's a pretty small commitment, like 15, 20 minutes, um, after the training session.
I was going to say, is there training?
Yeah, there's a training, but when you actually volunteer, it's only 15, 20 minutes. Um, and then a quick plug, which, um, clearly Dr. Tupper or Kayla or Mike or probably most people could do better than I, but there is a, um, a new IEP rolling out, um, that will be rolling out as your IEP is up. Um, there are changes. If anybody has any questions, wants support, reach out to anybody on the CPAC. Kayla, Mike said they'd be happy to be available, Dr. Tupper. Um, but as there's questions moving through that process, um, there are some changes. So just feel free to reach out for support.
Wow, I can't...
I know, I did a lot of liaising.
I prefer to have gone before you. Um, so I have the pleasure of liaison liaising, I guess, with, um, two really well-established school partners. So there's not, not a heavy lift for me. Um, Norfolk Rec, um, I have reached out to Ann Proto. Clearly, based upon what Tony and Ingrid have been discussing, um, Rec and the schools have a tremendous relationship. So I don't think that, um, as, as highly as I think of myself, I don't know that I will be able to, um, you know, I'm happy to try and facilitate and make it better, but, um, just keeping a line of communication open with the school committee can't hurt. With King Philip Music Association, um, I think I was noting with Adrienne before our meeting, I believe the contact information I have for their point of contact is outdated. I think they've had some changeover in their board, so we're working to figure out who the best person would be to connect with there. But anybody who went to band night probably knows that the King Philip Music Association is, um, pretty well established too. So I...
I have the easiest liaison role, I think, but, um, happy to continue chatting with both those organizations as we move forward.
And then PTO, I touched base with Jen. The Boosterathon is off to a strong start. They've raised over $9,000, uh, to go towards curriculum enhancements. Um, the goal was to create an event all children can participate in. So, uh, every student will receive prizes, including a lanyard and all, and a tee-shirt, and they'll all be participating in the fun run. And then I did mention a little bit, maybe about a shared calendar for everyone, like a list of all dates for all partners in one place so people can just see. And then Lauren really quickly just emailed me about NCL and the updates where there are a limited number of tickets still available for the Halloween, uh, train ride. And the NCL candy give back for the troops will be November 6th from 3:30 to 5:30 at Freeman Kennedy.
My favorite event of the year.
Same.
Give back your candy and then settle in for the community forum.
Exactly.
That's great.
Keep some of the candy.
Stay for the forum.
There you go.
Perfect. All right, then, in new items, we have a school partner renewal for the Norfolk Lions. They've been such a great community-based organization, uh, here for a very long time and they do a lot of good work that directly benefits kids in our school districts and also put on a lot of wonderful fundraisers. Um, so looking for a motion to approve their reapplication, or their renewal.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lions. And then I need, we are going to need to approve the minutes from our last meeting. People have had a chance to review. Can I just have a motion to approve the school committee may, meet school committee minutes from September 10th?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then our next meeting is scheduled for the 12th.
The 12th of...
November?
Isn't that the town meeting?
Oh.
Yes, it is. So...
We should probably be there.
Yeah.
Just change the meeting location to King Philip Middle School.
Well, if it's okay, we can send out some potential dates to people to, to shift that. It's tricky because Thanksgiving's right after, so maybe the week...
It's actually a week late.
Okay, so is the, is the following Tuesday the 18th?
Become the following week, yeah.
19th.
The 19th. So would the 19th be possible for people the week after the, um, town meeting?
Should be.
Sure.
Yeah, I think I can do that.
It's, I need to have a meeting, I need to see you at least once a week.
Well, leave the forum then.
And then, so as work, if the meeting's on the 19th, we won't meet again before the forum and before town meeting. So I think if anyone maybe just has questions about the latest flyer or the best YouTube video, we can all ask you. We can all, yeah, email each other and figure out, maybe through you the best way, we can all work together to get it in multiple places.
Yep, I think that sounds great.
And I think we should be able to link a lot of that to the, the building website, right?
Yeah, it'll be on the website, but if you have suggestions for where we should send flyers, because you, yeah, we can definitely coordinate that and we can share the, um, most recent one. It just went out in the building Wednesday's words and it'll go out in our district one next week too, um, for the November one, obviously not for tomorrow night. Yeah, uh, but we can get those too.
Okay, great. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.